From endangered species or no?
No, no.
And again-
Again, that's one of those, those added requirements that even if they, they meet the six hundred foot requirement, if they're not a half mile from unidentified endangered species habitat, then that's the setback they have to beat, not the six hundred feet.
So, I guess my question is, there's certain approvals that they can get in place before they submit an application. So I believe they can get the wildlife done, I believe they can maybe even get wetlands studies done. I mean, there's certain items that they can get done before they even submit it to us. So whoever lives in the area, when they get that application, they can see if there's, if those designations exist there.
This six hundred foot has never been mentioned before in this meeting tonight. Six hundred foot is nothing.
It was, it was discussed at the last meeting.
You brought up, I asked you, didn't have anything in set size and you, and I was so taken aback by you coming up with six hundred foot. It just blew my mind.
Well, it wasn't in the-
The safety manuals are way more than that.
It wasn't in the draft you had, but Cindy was, uh, asked what the applicability provisions would be and we read them and we discussed them at the last meeting.
Not six hundred, well, I mean, you're talking, you're talking about lakes and rivers?
Are they listed?
No.
Yeah, he's got within six hundred-
B is, is the lakes and rivers, six hundred foot.
Okay, you've got a concentration of hundreds of non-participating people there and you're not even giving them the standard setback of-
Anybody else? Excuse me, excuse me. If you look at D, it says a half mile from any low-density, medium-density lake residential zoning district or the corporate limits of the city.
Do you read any of our newspapers in the area? Cindy's like two and a half miles, Pines passing one mile and a half from any lakes or rivers. Another one's a mile, you're six hundred feet?
We're, we're here discussing.
Well, these, these seem to be doing our job throwing all these figures out here. This was what we were supposed to come up with.
We can change, you can change whatever you want. If you want to suggest something different, then we can hold that. So I mean, that's what we're here tonight for.
And, and that's a big reason why I prepared that map, so we could see what impact those different distances might have. I mean, if we say a two-mile setback from any lake, that wakes up several of those-
It would be like this, basically. And probably a portion of us.
Basically, it would just be that corner right there.
It would probably take out close to like this.
But if we don't do something like that, there's so many residents over here, you, 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 you're not gonna make them happy. And you, and you've gotta have some exclusion zones, like we talked about that one time. I mean, I, I don't understand why we can't do that, bring that subject up.
Two miles?
You got, you got hundreds of homes around these lakes and they're all gonna be affected.
He's, he's protecting those and that's-
Yeah, the six hundred foot.
Six hundred feet.
No, no.
Half a mile.
Okay, half a mile, that's nothing.
You're still talking way less than any of our neighboring townships are even considering.
Yeah. That's the neighboring townships, Rick. We're talking about Douglas Township.
But this is, this is the township. We, we have, we have the most revenue from our lakes. You, you can't do this to the, the people that are paying the most money for taxes.
Sixty-three percent of our revenue comes in other than-
Make a suggestion then to change it and vote on it. And while I make a suggestion, vote on it.
Yeah, I'd suggest we do mile and a half.
Mr. Chairman, could I just, one other thing? Again, the setbacks, whether it's a half mile or six hundred feet, that's a starting point, that's the minimum. But you're requiring noise studies, you're requiring, requiring flicker studies. So if they can't meet the decibel limits at the non-participating property boundary, they're gonna have to set back further or do something different to meet those requirements. I mean, whether, whether we said you could put it up at, at the property line is immaterial if they can't meet the, the noise and flicker and, and other requirements that are important.
This is a starting point. If a site plan comes in, then we can adjust the distance at a site plan.
Because they have to prove to you that they-
No more from the audience, please. The commission's talking up here. Thank you.
They have to prove to you that they meet all of the standards in this ordinance. So if they have to set back a mile in order to do that, that's what they have to do.
So he's saying zero decibels at non-participating properties?
That's what we have-
Correct, that's what's later. So if we start at twenty-six forty and they can't get to zero decibels at that distance, he's saying they could-
It's not zero decibels. I mean, we've got a decibel limit.
Right, yeah. I mean, at the non-participating or whatever the limit is, but they have to meet that. If not, they could, they will be forced to increase the setback to meet the decibel requirements.
But the whole problem with this decimal thing and what we just talked about is, you know, we, we got a whole book here of ordinance and stuff. We have a hard time enforcing that. How are we gonna go up against a big, huge company that they're the ones telling us how everything is? I mean, we've got David, he can't even enforce little stuff. How are we gonna go with these people? How, how, is it a little board? How, how do we do that?
You're right. It is, it is a challenging subject, but you fortunately have an ordinance in front of you that deals with that. Uh, what it requires the company to do, assuming you have approved the product, they have to do a post-construction sound study, or which you get to choose if they're a consulting company or if they're working for you. The company will have to follow that entire project. So they will have to follow the procedures that are kind of in the backend of this ordinance, but picking out the areas which show through modeling that have the highest propensity for the loudest noise. They've got to monitor at those locations. They're required to test at full power conditions. And the data is not collected by them, it's collected by you through your own consultant and it's brought back to you. And if they do not comply with the limits, they have to shut those turbines down. So you're right, that this is extremely big undertaking for any government alone as a smaller rural township. But that's how we deal with it, is forcing them to pay for it through a consultant that works for you and they have to demonstrate compliance.
I, I totally, I thank you for that, Emory. That's awesome. But the problem I have is, is we're gonna come up with these rules, we're gonna build them, and then if they don't comply, they're still there. I mean, now they gotta, we gotta force them to take it down if they're not complying and I, I don't see how that's even gonna be peaceful.
Well, what the ordinance provides is for them, they have to shut them down. And I think, um, there is such a financial investment in these that, that they're gonna find a way to operate them in compliance rather than tear them down. Then, I should point out, on top of that, I skipped one step. You know, they had, one of the things they have to do upfront is do a sound modeling study as well that's gonna be reviewed by your own expert that projects what the sound levels are gonna be at these compliance property lines. And they have to show before it's even built through the modeling that the sound levels are going to be compliant with that those boundaries. Now, I'll tell you, there's the modeling, of course, as you expect, is not always perfect. At the Lake Wind Energy Project up in Mason County, consumers had one turbine that they could never quite get to comply with the forty-five decibel limit up there and they had to put what I call a governor on it, had to nod it down from its total speed so it operated more quietly. Uh, and that's another option. Uh, they can put governor on it so they don't run at full power to keep the noise down. So, uh, there's a big difference there with the pre-construction modeling, there's a post-construction sound study that's gonna comply there. Either have to shut down or govern them, so, um, there is protective measures here to deal with these issues.
One question to the board, and I, so you said other communities have three hundred, four hundred foot. But why, why did they come to us with six hundred? Why, why are we not doing a three or four hundred like the other communities did? Why did they just propose a six hundred and no one else? Does anybody know that answer?
I think it has to do with the wind studies that are available on the state's website. They have a whole, when I went nosing around trying to figure out how the state regulated siting and all of those pieces, they have wind current levels and a lot of it along the lake shores because of dune preservation. They haven't mapped on the whole state. So I think that their height is based on that. I believe when I looked at the submission on the Mount Pleasant or Isabella, whatever you wanna call that project up there, they have some at four fifty and some that are like at five, five eighty-three. But they had an airport consideration that they had to deal with and that's why they were at four fifty. I think they kinda modified the height. But there is wind current, wind speeds, all of that is available to the Department of Energy and EDQ and the DNR website on the state. So I'm guessing that that's where it comes from based on, on the piece. Real quick, I don't wanna go back too far, but there's all of this findings section. How critical is that to the ordinance? Is that more of an informational piece to the community or do we have the right to add other things that we're considering?
I'll let Ron answer that because that's really there for the good uses.
Okay.
Will, um, the courts in general are to give deference to legislative findings about the justified type of regulations you're undertaking. Um, frankly, I'll tell you, a lot of these findings were, were taken directly from the, the citizens' ordinance, which had decidedly heightened concern about the negative impacts of wind energy. Do I think they are a significant factor when a court looks at the ordinance for its validity? I don't think much. Uh, they're gonna look at the actual standards more of these findings. But it's, it's fairly typical to put some legislative purpose at the front of an ordinance to explain why there's a legitimate governmental interest in regulating this matter, which is the, the general test for any type of governmental regulation. It has to be a reasonable means of accomplishing a legitimate governmental interest. And so you typically have these type of findings that for explain why you're regulating what you're regulating.
So we wanted to add findings, for instance, to support the equality here. Thirty-five percent of our current, current residents are greater than fifty-five years of age. That's a greater concern for electrical, electrical needs as they need medical supplies, equipment and other things going on later years of life. Add to that that Con, um, Consumers Energy is shutting down Plant Two in the next year. That is their game plan. And whereas Wolverine Power, um, on behalf of Tri-County Electric, they started up their peak plant in Cadillac. Um, it is, and it was only for peak power demands. It has ran every day except for twelve of the last two years. So their peak plant is already providing what's needed for baseline. The, the life and safety of our communities and reliance on electric, um, electrical service is significant. And I think we have to, as we're compromising, we're trying to deal with this legally, I think we have to also state that we're concerned about the life and welfare for all of our citizens and their children. I mean, it's brownouts are a real problem right now and Consumers Energy is shutting down Plant Two. All the coal scrubbers are leaving that plant that are already booked to go to India at this point. And I think we need to also say that we have considered the life and safety of our residents.
Is that something you can add in there, Paul?
Sure.
You wanna get with Tammy after the meeting and so you can give more in depth on, or did you have to talk?
If not, I can send you an email. So C is the half mile and the six hundred feet from wetlands. You're assuring me we're gonna be looking for us.
Anything else that I'm just, Rick, you wanna?
I, that, it's, you can't, maybe, I mean, basically, our ordinance is written, written. We gotta write it to protect the township and the non-participating property owners. The, the participating ones obviously would like them, and they can get them very, we had waivers written in, okay? They can get them as a lot closer, whatever. We're here to protect the property owners that are non-participating and the township. And there are hundreds of non-participating property owners along the lakes and rivers and we have, we're, we have nothing compared to our surrounding townships in comparison.
What I'm asking you is if you wanna change any of these, then make a motion to change them and then we can vote on it.
Okay, I would move that we change the, the, what page are we on? The Flat River, Dickerson Lake, Clifford Lake, Lake Stanton, the, the lakes, um, to- a mile and a half.
Rather than six hundred foot, you want one point five miles?
No, I think you-
Are you, are you talking B or C and D?
I'm looking at B here. I don't, the wetlands, they're, I mean, they're just virtually all over the place. You can't, I'm not saying the wetlands. I'm talking about-
B.
Talking about, uh, our lakes, the Flat River, um, our, our resources that bring in our recreational dollars that are paying the high, a lot of them are non-residents, so they're paying the higher rate on the property tax and, and it's, we need to protect that.
I would easily be more comfortable with the same as with the wetlands or endangered species. The half mile at least for the lakes, I think would be definitely reasonable. You know, if you're gonna protect a wetland, you need to protect, then give that same consideration to the lakes and the inhabitants.
The wetlands aren't paying taxes. I mean, we're paying taxes on our wetlands, but they're not, you're not talking about hundreds of non-participating people.
So I have a question. This is regarding the commercial. We look at the towers, for lack of a better word, that are excluded from this ordinance being personally used.
Personal towers.
Are you gonna be fine with that being fifty feet outside of wetland or a creek or their, or their lake?
I am not fine, I'm not fine with, I'm, there's, there's a responsible way to place them personally as well. I don't know what they are. I don't, I don't know all.
Well, I'm just saying, if, if, whatever your concerns are, you have excluded towers for residential use, which in theory could violate every single law.
We're not, we're not right here dealing with personal use. That's not what we're doing. It's a, that's a whole separate thing. If we put it in here, it's a separate part of it. It's not, it's not the same part. I know it is in here, but we're not-
Right now, we're talking about the actual commercial one.
We're talking about the commercial.
Let, let me try to frame the discussion, but I think this will give you the thought. You're raising a very good point. And what I want to add is what you're trying to accomplish, which relates to the discussion is, as Paul alluded to, if you've got standards in the ordinance that require noise to be only forty decibels, have the non-participating property line. If you have a provision that says zero shadow flicker on the non-participating property, you do have both of those provisions. And what is it that you're trying to accomplish with a greater setback from the lakes that those other things don't already accomplish?
I'm trying to keep an area that will maintain its property value. I mean, the rest of us are probably gonna get whatever, but you're talking about a concentrated area of non-participating people and we're not even giving, giving them anything.
Well, that, that's good. I'm glad you said that.
We were talking about a zone originally and he says six hundred foot. That's not a zone, that's a little strip around it.
Well, what I was trying to get, that's, that's a good way to focus the discussion because if your concern is devaluation of a property, then you can talk about what is an appropriate standard and what material are you relying on to say six hundred feet or a half mile or a mile and a half makes a difference as to the impact on the value of the property. I don't know the answer to that, but if that's your concern, that's where the conversation should occur and you have resources that show you it actually makes a difference in property value if you're a mile back versus six hundred feet or whatever figure.
Have you seen the pictures, like around Coldwater Lake? The actual pictures that they see from every direction? That's not, people are not gonna flock to a lake. In every direction you look, there's a big fan going. It, it, we're, sixty percent, I think it's, I gotta think on there. Sixty percent of the tax revenue in this county is made up of these lakes, right here.
Yeah.
That's good. I'm not, I'm trying to do the math, just, just the opposite. I'm trying to just find out exactly what they are and make sure if that's what you wanna protect, we have sufficient reason and data to support that the setback is huge and actually can make a positive difference on those things. Or if you're just doing something that's excessive or not enough on the other end.
We have lakes in every township around here and they're making provisions for each and every one of them and we're not, and then you have to find that.
So, uh, Rick, you suggested that we change the, uh, item B from six hundred feet to a mile and a half, correct?
Yeah.
Is that a motion? So we can, sort of support?
I support it.
Moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion?
I'd just like to add that if you can try to make an exception, you can make a huge group of people have a little bit more faith in this process. But if you allow the windmills to be near these lakes, you've lost all that support.
And, and from what I'm getting from Ron and, and Paul, with the noise and the shadow flicker and such as that, they can't be within that area anyway with the sound.
It's not just that, it's the, it's, they don't wanna see them. They don't wanna see it in the horizon. Let me, let me give you an example. Today, I look out my window, it's a beautiful sunny day, the sun's coming across the lake. And if there was a windmill over by the, the right away, that would put a shadow flicker over the whole lake. And that would be just the craziest thing in the summertime where you're trying to enjoy the lake and there's a shadow flicker all the time. It just, if, if it's, even if it's there, even if it's not moving, you're gonna see that. It's just, it's gonna be as big as life.
They actually are able to control that, but, and I could also show you, over, I don't know if you've been over by Lake Huron lately? Where there's million dollar homes and all they see is windmills at the side. So I think to the point that, has anybody been to a turbine?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so they actually, based on the position of the sun, can stop that flicker. So does, to make a statement, it is regulated. So it's regulated that way. So the, the statement that you're gonna have flicker that's going over the-
No more of that, please.
Isn't, isn't an appropriate statement because the technology allows them to stop that flicker from occurring.
Okay, we got, we got a motion on the floor. I think, uh, we, we should go ahead and, and vote on it. Um, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Baldwin?
Yes.
So?
No.
Schwishki. Tammy.
There we go.
Swear us.
Swear us.
I swear a lot. No, I don't. Um, I would say no at a mile and a half.
Well, Wells?
Yes.
Alpho? Motion is defeated.
Can I make a?
You can make another one.
You can make another one.
You know, with regard to your map, so what about a mile for those lake areas? Would that, how much of this is that going to drop out? You know, I understand your point, Todd. I don't live very far from Clifford Lake either, so, you know, I get, I see what you're saying. I get. But there's gotta be compromise. We gotta be able to figure out, you know, if you're not happy with the six hundred foot.
A mile would eliminate two small areas down by, uh, Clifford Lake.
These two?
Yes.
Okay, Lake Ripide, okay.
And I'm just saying that off the top of my head. The others appear to be at least a mile separate from the, the lakes, mainly because there's wetlands surrounding the lakes and, and that infringes on it as well.
I just wanna point out, if, if your emphasis is more on the lakes and the rivers, right now, this subsection B is treating, um, well, maybe it's not that different.
Yeah, it's Flat River.
Yeah, it's treating the lakes and the river the same. And if your concern is less so with the, the river than the lakes, why don't you flip those out and then just standardize?
Do you wanna make a motion to make it a mile?
So can I motion that, like Ron said, to separate the river, leave that at six hundred foot and a mile for the lake areas? That's what I would motion, then a, a mile for the lakes and six hundred foot still for the river.
Uh, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second and now it's open for discussion. Todd?
Just, my point is to, just to address you for a second, Sam, is I, I see the point where it's, you know, but the problem is, all these people come to me from the lakes and they just don't even wanna see them. I'm not saying that they're, they just don't wanna move them, they don't want nothing. And it, it's, it's, that's the hard thing. But I, I mean,
I, I get it.
I mean, okay, so you mentioned the million dollar homes. That's exactly what I'm dealing with. I got the mil, we've got the million dollar homes.
I know.
And, and those million dollar homes, they made the mistake not to fight and not to say that they didn't wanna see them on the horizon. And, and even, I know where you're at. I know what the place you're talking about.
They're still building there.
I know. And it's like, and those people that own those million dollar homes didn't, uh, they didn't do anything. They didn't talk to anybody. It's, it, to me, it was crazy that they didn't do anything.
So can I restate your question, Becky? You're asking that Flat River be moved up to A?
Yeah, or however it would need to be worded, but yes, leave that as a separate from the lakes.
Flat River and the designated wetlands together and then a mile for all the remaining items in that section.
Right.
Is that feasible?
Yeah.
So?
A river, you can't really get that close to that anyways, can you?
No.
No, 'cause you, you said something about that earlier, right?
I've had to build a lot of bridges.
Yeah, that sounds like, you can't really get close to that.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? We'll go ahead and vote. Alpho?
No.
Wells?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on. One page down, forty to go. The next few pages are definitions. Uh, you can see we've added a definition of applicant. I deleted the definition of emergency work because that term isn't used anywhere else in the ordinance. We've added definitions for non-nuisance compliant and nuisance compliant as well as non-
I have a question. Are we gonna require at least a submission to the zoning official for even the excluded use to ensure compliance before construction commences?
I, I can't answer that. I think so, but we can double check.
Okay, I just wanna make sure-
I know they'd be subject to permitting and-
But you know how we're relying on Montcount County, so I wanna make sure that we've got a way that we're at least hitting a peak before it goes. I'd like to tell you the electrical division is not gonna pay attention. And maybe this isn't the point, and I'm not sure which one of you can answer it. The decommissioning, I'm, I'm gonna bring up a global statement because there's a lot of things with insurance, bonding, decommissioning, there's all of these things. It's unclear to me what is held at the state level, at the Department of Energy. At what point are we needing to be additional insured? If there's indemnities that we need on some of these items? I'm just really confused by some of these various pieces. The completion bond portion, for instance, the insurance limit in here is three million and I can tell you that they're probably not gonna get away with less than a hundred million dollar policy during this course of construction. So I'm just globally, as I'm looking through all of these items and the definitions, I'm trying to understand how that plays into things. Because to the extent that the township is five down the pecking lane, right? I don't even know how I'm gonna bring up the worst case- I don't even know how, I'm gonna bring up the worst case scenario, right, that it, where another Californian, they don't decommission, how does Little Douglas Township get the attention of that decommissioning bond over the zoning piece? I just, I'm not seeing how that works. Maybe that's my request person governance training in some pieces, 'cause I'm sitting here with the Planning Act and the Township Act and the Public Meetings Act, and I'm, like, pulling my hair out right now. Everybody, I have three extra binders, so, um, I'm just really struggling with a lot of these pieces, so.
I, I get that, you're, number one, you're new, number two, this is complicated, uh, we're throwing a lot at you. I would ask, because you're asking great questions, we're gonna get to all those things as we go through it, but if we could.
Okay.
Focus on what we're dealing with at, at the present, uh, it'll help move things along. Uh, so on page seven, uh, uh, again, I deleted, uh, quiet rural residential property, again, that term isn't used in the ordinance anywhere. Uh, we added a definition of responsible party and participating landlord. On the next page, uh, we, we deleted WEX applicant and just moved it to the definition of applicant. Added a definition for sound measurement personnel. And that brings us to page nine, and we added a definition of wind turbine. So, on page nine.
Could we at least, item forty-one include whether it's horizontal or vertical, please? Forty-one's already deleted.
Forty-one or forty-two?
I was looking at, I was looking at the real one, it's your new forty-one.
Oh, he's going over the mark.
Oh, okay, yeah. Um, so on definition of wind turbine?
Yes.
Uh, add something about vertical?
Yes. Um, I don't know that we need to get into the details, but I'm finding conflicts between chapter twelve and chapter thirteen when I was going through the zoning ordinance. So you might just have some cleanup to do, and maybe you wanna exclude the wind from the site plan, because it has so many different and unique items. But there are conflicts in what we're asking for between chapter thirteen and this ordinance. So you're gonna probably wanna clean that up.
This ordinance spells out what we want on the website.
So maybe on, yeah, maybe on thirteen, you just say site plan requirement C, the proper ordinance, and not have it follow thirteen.